It is now six thirty-five. Madam City Clerk. We'll bring this to the line of the City Council to order. I'm going to ask the City Clerk to give the roll call, please.
Okay. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and Pastor George Magalini from the Hope Chapel. Hawthorne will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand along with me. Put your right hand over your heart and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council, staff. I have a couple of scriptures and a prayer tonight. First scripture is from Matthew six thirty-three. And it says, "Seek first the kingdom of God and all his righteousness, and all other things will be added to you as well." Let's pray, folks. Lord, Father, we count it a privilege to come before you and acknowledge you this evening. And we do thank you for your presence in our lives, Lord God, and your attention and your grace and mercy upon us and upon every citizen of this city. Lord, first, I would like to pray for all the children in this community, Lord, whether they're in their mother's womb, in school, in the neighborhoods. I pray your protection, your grace, your mercy upon them, Lord God. I would even ask, Lord God, that any evil wicked plan against them or foisted against them would be thwarted and canceled in your mighty name. We thank you for those that you have raised up to protect and to serve. Pray that you give them extra strength and courage and wisdom to protect and to serve well as you protect them. We thank you for every citizen, even the seniors I want to bring to you tonight, Lord God, that you bless and protect them, especially as things get warmer. Pray that you would just assist them and help them, provide for them. We thank you, Lord God, for those that you've raised up for such a time as this. I pray tonight that you would give your servants wisdom, that you would dispense it from your heart and give them everything they need to make decisions that line up with your principles and indeed benefit the people of this city. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Another scripture before I leave, it's from Isaiah, chapter forty, verse thirty-one. And it says, "They that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength; they shall mount up with wings as eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." God bless you. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Magalini, for those words of inspiration. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Sheriff's Department. Where are my glasses? Our lieutenant is joining us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for May twenty-fourth through June sixth. On May twenty-fifth, at approximately seven PM, the Lawndale Special Assignment Team, along with Sergeant Osborne, responded to one sixty-four hundred block of Prairie Avenue to assist the L.A. County Health Department with the operation for illegal vendor. There is a taco truck that the citizens have been complaining about set up over there that doesn't have a health permit because they don't have running water. So there was an operation executed. We confiscated all their food items and they were given an administrative citation from the public health inspectors. On June fifth, at approximately sixteen hundred hours, Deputy Lumpens responded to Hawthorne Boulevard and Marine Avenue for a theft report from a store. Deputy Lumpens located the suspect, detained him pending a theft investigation. After concluding his investigation, it was determined that the individual while attempting to steal items from the store, assaulted the first victim and then shoved the second victim when he was exiting the store without the items. Deputy Lumpens placed the suspect under arrest for robbery and he was booked at South L.A. Sheriff's Station. This concludes my report and I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions of the lieutenant's report?
I just have something to let the Sheriff Department know. There was a citizen that reported a red truck with two men in them between midnight and three AM stealing the catalytic converters on the south side of Manhattan, southwest side of Manhattan.
Manhattan Beach Boulevard?
Yes.
And did they give a cross street or no?
Yes, I heard a cross street. It's Gravilla and one sixty-first, one sixty-second.
In that area?
In that area.
Two males and a red pickup?
Two males, red pickup truck between midnight and three AM.
Okay. I will pass that information on to the patrol deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
One of the victims I didn't know where they had an exam at. But I knew one of the neighbors had told me where one of the victims was.
Do you know if they made a report?
At the time, the neighbor told me about it. They have not made a report. But of course, I highly encourage...
They're afraid of reporting in case they come back.
What happened at the same time. One right after the other, about three minutes on each.
Well, either way, you could encourage them to make the report. If you don't feel comfortable, you could always have them contact me at the Lawndale Service Center. I'll reassure them that we'll do everything to protect them. The report helps us as far as when we go into investigation prosecution.
Thank you.
We could still use the information.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like you to have the information.
Correct. And then one more thing, I would like to introduce our operation lieutenant from South L.A. Station, Lieutenant Monica Batello who's here tonight. You might want to say a few words.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
And council members, it's nice to meet you. I'm the operations lieutenant. I'll be the acting captain here for the next two to three weeks. And then we'll see what happens with Captain Allen. Meanwhile, I'm here to address any concerns you may have and introduce myself to you this evening. And I understand that Sergeant Osborne has already addressed our public safety report. If there's anything else, of course, I'm here and I'll be at the station if you need me as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I did not. I can, of course, and I'll give it to Sergeant Osborne to hand out. I have three, like ten or so, just in case you need them. But I'm also at the station, so I don't, I seem to spend a lot of my time there. So you can always reach me there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Let's hear from our fire department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Battalion Chief Ramon Valdoria, assigned to Battalion Eighteen, which covers your beautiful city of Lawndale. I'm here to give the incident status report for the city of Lawndale for the month of May. Total calls that the city had were, was two hundred and ten calls. Of those two hundred and ten calls, four were fire calls. There was no property damage on those fires. They were basically rubbish fires outside the structure. So no property loss, no citizens displaced. The other fire was just a container started to smoke. Someone just left their food on the stove. So no damage to that property as well. Also, out of those two hundred and ten calls, two hundred and four were medical rescues. One hazardous, we call it hazardous condition, which was a arcing pole, which was mitigated by Edison. We also had one call that was a false alarm. Someone called nine-one-one and there was no merit to that nine-one-one call. That's all I have. Is there any questions?
Any questions of the platoon chiefs on report? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, if you'd like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you come to the podium, if you would start with your name, please. In about two and a half minutes, the amber light will display, giving you the signal to start wrapping things up. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Pino. I'm the community library manager over at Lawndale Library. And I'm here to give you some announcements. I want to let everybody know, starting June fourteenth, we're going to start with our lunch at the library. It's going to be a grab and go program, so anybody eighteen and under can come in and grab a lunch and take it with them. We continue with our storytime every Thursday at ten-thirty to eleven. We did change the time in the day, which was actually worked in our favor. Now we're getting a lot more families coming to the storytimes rather than having it at a later time. And we are also starting with our summer reading program. So anybody, this is from baby, toddlers, school age, all the way to adults. Anybody's welcome to join our summer reading program. We're going to have a bila-bila show. It's going to be a bilingual show. This will take place Wednesday, June fifteen, at three-thirty. We continue with our kids' book club. And this is throughout the whole month. At the end, after they submit their questions, the children who participated, they're entering to a drawing for a gift card. For teens, last week, we had our first volunteer orientation. We had about five teens wanting to volunteer at the library. And we haven't scheduled another orientation, but whenever, anybody's welcome to come in and let us know that they're interested in volunteering and we'll go over the orientation with them that day. It's summertime, so we will be meeting volunteers, and this is for teens. We're also going to be having our teen advisory board Thursday, June twenty-third. And this is to asking teens to come and join us and to help shape the future of the library for teens. They can bring up ideas as to what programming they want to see, magazines, books, anything that they think that would help the library to attract more teens to the library. So our first meeting is going to be June twenty-third at three. And lastly, we are going to have our adult book club. It's been a while since we had one for the adults. And it's going to be every month, the second Thursday of each month at ten-thirty. And the first book club for adult will be this upcoming Thursday, June ninth, at ten-thirty. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
So it's official. Fireworks season is here. It started Saturday night, June fourth. I saw this statement on the app next door and on the internet, and I thought it was something that should be shared here tonight. As we all know, the city just loves having its fireworks no matter what. But this is what it read. Just a thought, instead of buying fireworks, buy two cans of pet food for a sheltered animal. Don't make a noise, make a difference. Wouldn't it be nice if all the fireworks stands that the city's approved all had a sign like this where people could drop off food for the local SPCA, the Carson Shelter, the Lovejoy Rescue, Mammal Rescue in San Pedro, or any other animal rescue that are in the South Bay area? I'm sure the church and youth groups would just love to give back. It's also the elderly who have animals and have to go through a lot trying to calm their pets. Most people also have to make an appointment with their vet before the fourth to get tranquilizers to keep their pet calm. Even if the elderly don't have animals, it's still a very loud night for them. I also mentioned veterans or anyone suffering from PTSD in the past on this subject. Most of the fireworks end up in the middle of the street or kick to the gutter for the street sweeper to pick up. It ends up in the storm drain and out to the ocean where it'll affect sea life. I know nothing's going to change this issue here in Lawndale as long as you continue to have these stands. The explosions will only get worse from here on out. Maybe these fireworks stands should have to take a tour of the shelters the day after and be educated on what the outcome and damage it truly does. Yes, I will be donating to my own local rescue. It's so much better feeling than an explosion or firework. Money better spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Good evening. I am assistant manager at Ardis Construction Supplies. First, I want to thank the council for giving us the extension. And as of right now, we're at ninety percent completion of everything. So by the deadline, which is, I believe, Thursday, everything should be up to code and we're thankful to you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. After tonight's meeting, there will only be one meeting before the July Fourth weekend. On April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the City Council approved this year's Illegal Fireworks Suppression Plan. What preparations are now underway that were detailed in this plan? Has the Sheriff's Department secured the staffing for the July Fourth weekend? The Illegal Fireworks Suppression Plan has a community awareness program advising of the consequences of using illegal fireworks. This includes a heavy rotation on the city's social media sites, the cable TV channel, and the city's website advising the community of the increased presence of deputies in undercover vehicles and the issuance of administrative citations to property owners for allowing illegal fireworks to be used on their property. Also included to increase awareness is utilization of the electronic message board, broadcasting the fines for illegal fireworks, and a banner across Hawthorne Boulevard advising that illegal fireworks are prohibited. With less than a minute to July, with less than a month to July Fourth, when will these communications begin? A new recommendation approved is the placement of ads on social media sites soliciting the purchase of illegal fireworks. When vendors answer the ads, city staff will set up a time and place to purchase illegal fireworks. When the meeting is scheduled to occur, deputies will be there to confiscate the illegal fireworks and issue citations. In the forty-nine days since it was approved by the City Council, how many ads have been placed? What results have been achieved in confiscating illegal fireworks? This is an important component of potentially cutting off the supply and reducing the bombardment of exploding mortars on July Fourth. One recommendation that some council members appear to support is mandating that the fire manufacturers bring tribute to the increased cost of law enforcement due to fireworks. This is an approach that other cities use to recruit costs for fireworks enforcement. Unfortunately, as in so many other recommendations, there does not appear to be any follow-up. Apparently, the oil industry allegedly contributes to local youth programs. It's a shame that the fire manufacturers who make so much money in July Fourth contribute nothing to the community. This year's audit of the nonprofits shows a failure of the majority of these groups to spend the funds raised to benefit the community in accordance with the city's requirements. The setting up of the stands will begin shortly. The municipal code states no fireworks display or stand shall be located within twenty-five feet of any structure or property line. The minimum setbacks required for the public sidewalk shall be ten feet. I remember from last year, at least one of the sites, one of the stands was just a few feet from the sidewalk. This needs to be enforced this year along with all these signage requirements. With the Fourth of July rapidly approaching, it is anticipated that the recommendations approved on April eighteenth will be successfully implemented. Unfortunately, some neighborhoods are already being bombarded by illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring up the comments from the, any response from public comments? Let's hear from Councilman Kearney.
I want to thank everyone, all four of you that spoke tonight. I have a comment on Ms. Librarian. Thank you for the event update. And I'll pass it on to my colleague, Demareen.
Thank you. Councilman Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. I would just like to make sure that the stands are in compliance with our local code. So with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilman Cuevas.
Thank you for coming out. And I know that Michael will be looking into the firework stands prior to opening day.
Madam Protem, I'm Hoffman-Gorman.
I would also like to thank all the people that addressed us this evening, Dina. I appreciate what you had to say about the animals. Since my own family has lost an animal specifically due to the sound. He passed away literally because of the sound of illegal fireworks. I absolutely understand where you're coming from. And I too wish that everybody could go to the SPCA and see the morning after what us rescuers have to undo. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was also going to thank Dina for bringing that to our attention, the animal shelters and SPCA and the other shelters. Yeah, it is something, you know, that's a, you know, concern, you know, because animals end up missing, you know, after the Fourth of July or during that period, I should say. You know, cats end up missing or what have you. Luckily, we don't have a cat this year. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. And the representative from J.R., Building and Supplies, I think it was Mr. Davey. Thank you for that update there. And also, Mr. Rando spoke about the fire suppression and the ideals that he enumerated. Yeah, I was wondering about the manufacturers. Did we ever get any place or anywhere with the manufacturers giving back or how they contribute to the communities over and above what they make from, you know, the fireworks? Not the stands themselves, but the manufacturers.
Sure. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We did reach out to the other cities. Mr. Abrams did put some touch with what he believed the other cities were doing. We found that other cities weren't able to get money from the manufacturers. There's no direct tie from the manufacturers to the city. So there's no way to coerce them into paying anything. We could increase fees to the actual selling groups, which would be the churches, the Boy Scouts, things like that. But there's no way to directly tax the manufacturer to offset our costs for, without putting those costs on to the groups that are selling the fireworks.
Okay. I would think that at some point that they would have goodwill community gestures. I mean, there's, the amount of cities that allow fireworks tend to be shrinking more than expanding. So you would think with that, that they would be doing some type of community, even though they may not be required to do it, some type of community, not necessarily even doing the July Fourth, but just throughout the year, what have you, as a good corporate, you know, partner or citizen, as they call it. But anyway, that's just my thoughts, but...
And we'll continue to look into it. We just, that's what we discovered so far.
Okay. Thank you for that. With that, that's all I have. That's all the responses for public comments from the council. With that, we will move our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar. There's one. There's ten items on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the body concerned as such?
If there's no...
Yeah?
Ms. Cuevas wants to talk? Ms. Cuevas?
No.
Okay. If there's no additional subpoenas, I make a motion to accept the consent calendar's ready?
So the motion has been made by?
I'll second it.
By Kearney and seconded by Suarez, that we approve the consent calendar? Are there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please, I mean, okay. Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For the consent calendar, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, item eleven, under administration, concerning awards of contract of landscaping maintenance. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. The item before you is staff's recommendation to award a contract for landscape maintenance and tree trimming services to Mariposa Landscape Incorporated. The city of Lawndale Public Works Department oversees a landscape maintenance at parks, landscape areas in the city facilities, including weed abatement, irrigation inspections, and litter removals. In addition, the department also oversees the tree trimming in the street parkways, parks, city facilities, and the railroad right-of-way along Condon. South Bay Landscaping has been providing the landscape maintenance since two thousand and fourteen and the tree trimming services since two thousand and sixteen. The two current agreements with South Bay Landscape expires on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. To utilize the economies scales, Public Works Department combined both the landscape maintenance and the tree trimming services into one single contract and sent the RFP to sixteen different qualified regional landscaping contractors on April twentieth. We also had a pre- previous meetings with seven different contractors. And on the May seventeenth, city received three proposals from Mariposa, Mariposa and South Bay Landscape, and also one from Stay Green. Based on the, based on the proposal that was received, the Mariposa provided the most optimal proposal based on their experience and based on their, the staff, and also based on the price. Let me get into that one more time. Sorry. Sorry, council, I just lost the place.
No problem.
Sorry about that. The Mariposa is a professional landscape company over four years of experience, and they provide similar services to the cities like Santa Monica, Monrovia, city of Rancho Camaanga, and Newport Beach. They are a full-service landscape company with over six hundred employees with certified irrigators, certified landscape techs, certified arborists, and pest control advisors to provide the services to the city. So with that, staff recommends City Council to approve the proposed agreement for landscape maintenance and the tree trimming services between the city and the Mariposa Landscape in an amount of not to exceed two million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents over a three-year term with an option to extend the two additional years, two additional one-year term. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Lee, item eleven. Any discussion on item eleven?
I just have one question. Do we have any local vendors applying or doing an RFP?
I think South Bay Landscape was a local, was regional. A lot of them are regional that we sent the, part of the sixteen qualified contract, we did send it out. But a lot of contracts chose not to provide the proposals.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Any other, further discussion on this item?
Now, I make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
Okay, the motion has been made by Kearney that we go with the staff recommendation concerning the award of contract for landscaping maintenance.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on item eleven.
For item eleven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item twelve, the First Amendment to a Professional Service Agreement for Staff Augmentation Services with W.G. Zimmerman Engineering. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, this item before you is to approve the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement for the Staff Augmentation with the W.G. Zimmerman Engineering. Public Works Department Engineering Section provides the engineering and project management during planning, design, and deconstruction phases of many projects, including CIP. They also oversee and conduct technical review of the designs, documents, to ensure that professional engineering designs are adequately practiced under standards and the practices. And also, they do coordinate public works construction improvements, project with other utility companies and other agencies like Metro, Caltrans, L.A. County, and the nearby cities. Some of the critical Public Works Department projects currently that we're working on, as you know, is Inglis War Project that we're finishing up, Redondo Beach Boulevard Street Improvement Projects. We're also working on the two thousand and twenty-two pavement management plan and the citywide site replacement project that we're trying to finish. And again, other projects that are, that have the funding lapse requirements that we're working on. On the May tenth, one of our engineer submitted a letter of resignation to the city effective May the seventeenth. Due to the short notice of resignation and current projects that are critical, we have requested several, not eight different consultants to provide the staff augmentation assistance. We received only three from the consultant because of such a short notice. And based on the... And based on the three proposed that was received on the May 12th, we selected Zimmerman Engineering based on their technical knowledge, qualification, and the staff experience and the fee schedule. They started on May 16th in 04 to get, gather up the information from the departing, departing staff, and they've been helping us currently right now. With the new employee recruitment, there is a need of additional eight weeks to extend this contract out to end of, possibly end of, end of July, so that we could have continuation with these projects until we have new engineer in staff. On May 23rd, staff requested proposal from Zimmerman based on the initial proposal, and they provided a cost for the additional professional engineering services in an amount of $38,400. In opposed, as opposed to the initial scope of work, which was under Tashawn Moore's authority, because it was under $15,000, that additional request is beyond his authority, and it does require council's review and approval. So with that, staff recommends city council to approve First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement with Zimmerman Engineering for Public Works Department's stack augmentation in an amount not to exceed $38,400.
Okay. Thanks for that report. Are there any questions of the report? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item 12?
I'll motion to approve item 12.
And I'll second it.
The motion has been made by Cuevas that we approve item 12. The recommendation for item 12 is seconded by Suarez. Are there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on the motion.
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, city managers, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. Good evening. So this item before you is potential cancellation for upcoming city council meeting that falls on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. It's just right after the July 4th Monday holiday. Staffs looked at this, and department heads find that there's no pressing agenda items that need addressed, and council meeting will not present any impact to the operations of the city. Therefore, staff has recommended that the council, 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 council the following council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 5th, 2022.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Is that the end?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that item?
I have no discussion, but I'll go with staff recommendation that we cancel the July 5th meeting.
And I'll second.
I'm okay with that as well. Well, we can do it by unanimous consent unless the city attorney objects.
Consensus, I agree, sir.
Very good. So, everybody good? All right. All right. So you're free to draw on on July 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council.
Okay, next item is items from council member items. We do have one item under this item placed by Councilmember Bernadette Suarez.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yes. It must be the hair. Don't have to vote on this cancellation of the meeting?
No, unanimous, we did. unanimous consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are in order.
Okay. So I'll take this one over. So normally, I wouldn't put something like this on the agenda, and it's actually not in the staff report specifically, the item that I think is a big deal. So there's only one ballot initiative right now, and I'm sure you're hearing a lot about all of those around. This one in particular has a specific provision in there that is going to be very harmful to the region. So this specific initiative is, has on there a provision under PAGA. So under the Private Attorneys General Act, there's an added provision that would allow tribal casinos to, basically, instead of having to go through the attorney general, which is the current process, they would be able to sue directly, card rooms directly. So basically, so the Private Attorneys General Act, it basically protects employees from employers. This specific initiative adds a provision in which they can go specifically to sue card rooms. So as it currently stands, they have to go through the attorney general. Throughout the history, they've been trying to bring claims that card rooms are in violation of the penal code, and they've tried, and they can also go to, I think, the district attorneys currently. So they've been trying to do that on a few. The response has been that they haven't found these card rooms in violation. So this has kind of been dropped into this measure, kind of hidden, and the implications would be that if this passes, they basically can just start suing them. And so cities such as Gardena, Inglewood, it would, I think more so the, some of the smaller cities like Hawaiian Gardens, they rely a lot on the tax revenue. So if this were to pass, they're looking at extreme damage to their budgets and to city services that they have. It would also be a regional thing where it would kind of open the floodgates. So specifically, without, because, let me, sorry, let me pull up my notes, because it took me a little bit of time to kind of understand. Normally, I wouldn't bring this. I'm like, you know, this isn't to me, but, so currently, you know, they have to go through the whole process, going to the attorney general, seeing if they find a legitimate claim. Then if it is, they'll take it up, look at it, and decide, you know, whether or not it's legitimate concern. It hasn't been so far, and so I'm viewing this ballot measure as including that provision in which they're allowed to go directly and sue them. It also, I think currently now, people are more concerned, while it only affects card rooms, however, under this new provision, it could allow the floodgates for basically gaming in any capacity, you know, such as raffles, maybe even bingo and whatnot. And so I look at it as harmful to the region. I know contract cities has taken a position. Bizfed has taken a position. The COGS have taken positions. And there are several other cities currently that are looking at the same resolution that we're currently looking at, and so that's why I wanted to bring it forward, because it definitely would harm the region in terms of the local economy and jobs, not to mention specifically working class and minority communities. And so that's why I brought it forward with the hope that we could support the, our fellow contract cities and take a position. I don't know how the rest of the council feels on this.
Thank you for that overview. Are there any discussions on this item? You guys want to discuss this item?
Well, if there's.
Well, I have one question. So you say the tribal, the tribes in California want to do the, the card games and the trace tracks, correct?
So there's a number of things in this measure. However, the one provision that I found that was more or less disturbing was the change to the California constitution, adding this so that, because it's, currently, there's, they're saying that the card rooms are in violation, and it has to do with the way that they conduct, there are specific ways you have to conduct the games, and I think it has to do with the dealers. And so they have gone to the attorney general and to some of the district attorneys to ask them to take it up, saying they're in violation. They haven't found that they have been. So this provision would allow them, instead of having to go through there, just allow them to sue directly. And in that case, they're saying if they keep suing them, eventually, it's, you know, the intent is to put them out of business, which then hurts those that rely on the tax revenue and all of that. So this, this has been taken, it's really going to devastate in the immediate those cities that have card rooms. You know, Compton, I think tomorrow is looking at a resolution, Hawaiian Gardens, City of Commerce, Bellflower, Gardena, Inglewood, those are just to name a few in our region, contract cities, a region that would definitely be impacted by this.
So we couldn't have a happy medium, both the tribal casinos and the Alene City casinos can't have card rooms and?
This one's already qualified for the ballot. So if it passes, then it's, it's a done deal. There's no, I mean, that's why, it's already on the ballot, qualified. They've gotten the signatures, and they have the money to basically push forward. So that was the concern of a lot of the other cities, was that if this passes, they believe that the card rooms will be bankrupted, and then eventually, they'll lose that source of funding.
Okay, well, personally, I can't support this, so I'm stepping back from it. I'm saying no. I mean, we took enough away from the Native Americans. It's about time we start getting something back to them. And with that, I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay, so you don't want to take a position on this?
No.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to kind of fill the room, I mean, if anybody else. I just saw it as it was definitely going to devastate some of those others. If, if it was not for that PAGA provision, I wouldn't have brought it up. But it's definitely going to have impacts to those cities that have card rooms. But, you know, I'm completely fine with just sitting this one out, if that's the consensus.
Is there any way I could get more information on this? Because I'm in, I'm in between saying yes and no. Because technically, it's not going to affect Longdale, but it'll affect our neighboring cities.
And then that was the concern, is that it starts off with those card rooms, and then it potentially can go to other, you know, they can, instead of going through the system of going to the attorney general to take up a concern, it just allows them to basically go straight to the source and sue. But yeah, I can definitely, we can table this, and then I can provide more information. And if the council wants to take a look again, we can do that.
We have until when? It's coming in November.
Yeah, yeah, it's not until November.
It's on the November ballot.
Yeah.
So my, my thing is, I've heard that a lot of Native Americans are for this, and some of them are not. So.
It probably depends on.
It depends which side they live, I guess. But I would like to get more information before I get, make a decision.
Okay, let's do that. I can provide more, and then if the council wants to take a look again, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I could add a little bit if, it's a very complicated issue, and as the council's mentioned, on some of the items, it's an initiative to change our constitution. It affects both our local card rooms, based on the research that was provided, and research that, and as well as it affects, it's the, as everyone knows, it's, you know, gaming is a big deal to the Native American tribes in our state, but also the card rooms as well. So as you know, we have several cities surrounding that could be impacted potentially with the job losses, and what the council member was explaining is, it's a slippery slope. I think that's what you're kind of, if we let, if, if this goes unchallenged and unchecked, potentially, the issues could exacerbate for not just card rooms, but other types of, like bingo, other types of raffling, that kind of thing could be the slippery slope. So there was some concern on it. There's both sides weighing in on this. It's a very complex issue, as the council knows, and we'll be, bring it back with, do some more research. We had a short window, so we could certainly do additional research and bring it back to the council for consideration.
And maybe include the actual ballot, so you can see the language on it, in which it states what would be impacted.
Great idea. Yeah, we'll do include that as well.
Okay. Okay, so we'll revisit this item at a future council meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman. Let's move on to item 15. For the mayor and city council members' reports of attendance at any meetings, anything you want to share?
I have nothing.
Anything you want to share?
I have nothing.
Councilman Suarez.
I do. I attended our Memorial Day service event, and I just had to say, our guest speaker, I mean, all the speakers, they were such beautiful stories. You know, it was, it was pretty emotional, so I do want to thank everybody that came out and staff, and it was just beautiful. And then I will, I did attend our board of directors meeting for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. They did bring up also, we did have a visit from West Basin and talking about the drought and steps that they're taking. And then there is one thing I wanted to bring up is, I've been hearing a lot more complaints about coyotes, so I just want to make sure that's on the radar, our plan. Even someone as far as saying that they're, they saw one attacking their bunnies in their backyards in the middle of the night, like jumping into people's yards. And then I know there's a lot apparently in Alondra Park, so I don't know if that's something we reach out to the county about, because it seems, seems to be the problem is growing, so want to keep that on our radar. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cuevas.
I attended the California League of Cities General Meeting. Senator Bradford spoke, and he, the Senate is coming out with something to, regarding gun control, and so we should be seeing that within a month or two for us to review, if we want to do an ordinance on that. I also attended El Camino College 75th Anniversary Diamond Jubilee Celebration Concert. Very nice event, and the, this year, El Camino College is 75 years old. So if you haven't seen the campus, you should walk it. It's really nice. It's very different than 10 years ago, or I recommend that you go and visit their, their campus. I did attend the Memorial Service, Memorial Day Service. Thank you, Mike and staff for putting that together. The, like Bernadette said, the speaker, you know, made me a little teary, but it's, it's, his stories were very nice. Also, I did have a couple of complaints from neighbors about our lawn permits. A few of them told me that the cost to change the lawn was less than the cost of the permit. So I don't know if we could look into that, because some of them are doing it without permits, and, you know, and it's because they can't afford the, I think it's $390 or something like that.
It's a flat work permit, so it includes parking pads, any changes to their front yard, which has been regulated over the years, and we can look at it, but council recently approved the fee update last year, and we can, but we can all look at those items. We are looking.
If we can look at that, because they were saying, they were claiming that their cost of changing their, their flat work was going to be less. That's all.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Pro Tim Hoffman-Gordon.
Yes, since our last council meeting, I did attend a meeting with Metro along with our city manager. Nothing really is, is changing. We're just being successful at continuing to remind them Longdale's stance on the green line. And I also attended the Memorial Day event, and I just want to say thank you to both Public Works for the job of the setup and to Mike's great job. That is one of the events that really makes me proud to be part of Longdale. I think if, I wish that every resident had the opportunity or would take the time to come and see this event. It just really hits home and makes us all proud of, and remembering those people that gave so much, and those families of Longdale that have given so much for the freedoms that we all share today. I had two other things I wanted to remind residents about. The first one is, the pet fair is coming up, or I should say, the Health and Safety Fair that includes the pet fair on June 18th at the Adams Park. I encourage everybody to come for no other reason, but let's get those dogs licenses and have their shots done. We're seeing more and more dogs out on our streets, and we need to make sure that they are licensed and that they're being good citizens as well. I also want to encourage our residents that when we're experiencing problems such as a catalytic converter being stolen, and this was on my list of things that I wanted to bring up tonight, please. please notify the sheriffs. We cannot keep losing these things. We have to have records of them. That's our only way at this point of getting this problem resolved is, and, and taking these people off the streets. It takes only three minutes for them to do this damage and it's costing us two thousand dollars at a time to replace these things. Let's start reporting them or else it's just going to continue. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, yes, Mayor.
I would like to let everyone know that Longdale Little League is having their closing ceremony this coming Saturday, the eleventh, at ten AM at Jane Adams Park. So whoever could attend, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, yes, Mayor.
I also. I didn't write this one down and I thought about it tonight on the way to the meeting. I wanted to give a shout out to our Longdale Historical Society. I don't know if any of you are watching or are members of their Facebook page. I would like to encourage all of our residents to join that page. Our former councilman, Jim Osborne, is putting out some incredible information on the history of Longdale, absolutely outstanding. And even though most of it I probably might have kind of remember, it's still been fun to read his writings and see the photographs that he's posting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, so I did attend the, the city selection committee meeting, regular meeting, where they appointed someone to the library commission. I think they finally, it was a back and forth as a, who's gonna get stuck with the library commission? Did I say stuck? With the library commission, because it seemed like no one in the region ever wants to be under library commission, which makes me, you know, believe like, why do we have a library commission? Because even when I was on it, you didn't get a lot of takers, just put it that way. Anyway, so we talked about that and we also talked about the, I'm not supposed to say that that loud, huh? And we also talked about the local formation, commission. This is routine of business with the city selection committee. Once we finally got a quorum, which is really hard to do, sanitation district meeting, just regular.
Regular trash talk, basically, regular trash and sewer talk, you know, a meeting, but important, nevertheless.
I also attended the, the Memorial Day event. Kudos to, big ups, I should say, to the, the staff for putting that together, the Public Works and the social services, community, what is it called, social services department for putting that event together. It was really well put together. I mean, our speaker was, was excellent, a speaker from the Air Force Base. I have to tell you that our, the attendance was, I attended three that day and our attendance was outstanding. We had great attendance compared, I'm not gonna say which ones I went to, the other, other two. And this was coming out for recess of, was it two years, not having a, a in-person event. So I want to thank everyone who made the, the time to come to the event to remember those who gave the, the ultimate sacrifice for our nation and for our freedoms. And also, you know, for, you know, the, the staff who puts on the events, because it's nothing, as, as a person, we used to work in the assembly for quite a number of years putting on events. It's nothing disheartening to put on an event and no one shows up. You know, throw a party and no one shows up. So I want to thank you for, for coming out, for remembering, you know, our, our fallen service members and for, of course, supporting, you know, the staff who works so hard to put these events together and our volunteers that work so hard to put these events together, in particularly, the Memorial Day event. And that's all I have on, on meetings. I do want to bring up street repairs. We used to, way back in the, in the days, we used to have like a, I call it a pothole report. That was back when potholes was really sexy. They were never really sexy, but it was a lot of, a lot of weather, right? And so there's a lot of issues with potholes around the, not just our town, but around the, the region. So we used to get a report on how are we doing in terms of, of street repairs and things of that, that nature. There's a number of streets in Longdale, as we know, that, that, that needs some attention. And I know we have a capital improvement, a, a program or what have you. I think the thing that, if, if there was a way where the residents will, would be able to know when their streets are gonna be serviced, I think it puts them more, more at ease. Because often what happens is, I've, I've experienced this lately, because for some reason, I'm walking this, I was gonna say, I walk in the streets, you know, I'm on more of the streets more frequently. And so I'm seeing more of the streets, you know, from the ground level, if you will. And some people has, has asked about their streets, when their streets are gonna be repaired or what have you. And oftentimes, the streets are actually on a schedule, you know, but of course, as a resident, you may not know that, you know, your street is slated to be repaired in next year or whenever it is in six months or what have you. I don't know if there's a such thing as allowing the, the public to, to find out when their streets are scheduled to be repaired. These are streets that's obviously on a, on a list somewhere and if, and if they're not, I doubt very soon if they're not on a list somewhere. It's not like a, a pothole here and there, these are actual streets that need really repaired. So if you can give us an update on that every once in a while, that would be awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, the staff is finishing up what's called twenty-twenty-two pavement management plan. And this is a collective plan of how this whole street of Longdale will be improved. Currently, I'm working with Haran on the CIP for next five years. That list will, that CIP budget will have the list of the streets that will, that will be repaired the next five years. Once the pavement management plan will be complete with, which will be in next, I'll say, two to four, four weeks, that we will post those schedules online for the, for the public to prepare. One thing that didn't happen with the previous pavement management plan was that it did have just one way of repairing the, the streets, which is just a grind and overlay. This PMP will compose of not just the grind and overlay, but also a, a slurry so that we could extend the life of the asphalt. And also, we'll initiate the sidewalk replacement program so that the sidewalk will be replaced independent of the street. So those comprehensive pavement management plan was approved by the council last year and we are on process completing that. And once that's done, the public will have a chance to look at the, what the list, where they will be placed in the future. And also the PCI, which is a pavement condition index, so that they know where this, what, what the condition of their street compared to the other part of the town. So we'll be, we're coming back to you in the next, next few meetings.
Okay, nice. Thank you for, thank you for your work on that, in that regard and your, your staff work. Yes, Mayor.
Julian?
But if there's a pothole and my street is not to be paved in the next year or so, I could call Public Works and they'll come out and patch the pothole, right?
Correct. So one of the problem with the current system is that we don't have a kind of an on-call contract with the contractor, which is what I'm trying to set up right now. So if there is a pothole that we could have the contractor to repair it within two or three weeks after it's identified or urgent, but we don't have the contract right now. That's one of the on-call contract that I'm trying to set up right now. So, but in case there's a pothole, do notify Public Works Department, we will repair it. It's temporary until the, the permanent repair is done.
You guys have like a little truck with the asphalt in it?
Correct. It's called coal mix. So what we'll try to do, we'll try to place it. However, with time, the coal mix will get loosened and then it will get bad, bad again. But before yesterday's, we'll make sure that permanent paving is done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we can, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We could also add on the website, I'll work with staff to add this PMP repair system on the website so the public can access it. I think that's one of the questions you had.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, it's got a text from our city clerk, Erica Harbison. She forgot to mention about tomorrow, it's a very important day. That is election day, voting day. You know, get out and vote. There's a great race, sixty-second, sixty-first race. I'm not gonna tell you who I'm voting for, but please get out and vote. Thanks, Erica.
She said you're welcome. Okay, with that, we have reached the conclusion of our agenda. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Tuesday, June twenty-first in these here chambers. It is now seven thirty-five.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, we also have a special meeting, a budget meeting workshop as well, scheduled for five thirty as well.
That is true, but I did say the next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's correct.
But that's true as well. Now, say that again, just so the public can know. What day is that again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on October, I'm sorry, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty, we're having a budget workshop meeting. So I invite all the public to come participate and the council will go over our, our budget numbers for the new fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, very good. With that, it is now seven thirty-six and this meeting is adjourned.